All the regular meeting of the Plain Township Order trustees for February 10th, 2015. Will everybody stand and join us in the same place?
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Before we start the agenda, I want to advise everybody of the room capacity of the fire code, we have exactly eighty-five seats in this room. And once we exceed the eighty-five person limit, we're going to have to ask people to stand in a hallway. Is there any empty seats right now in the audience?
There is.
We're going to need for everybody to take an available seat. We're going to need those in the back to come up front. Okay, those that are in the back of the room, they're going to have to stand to the side of the doorways because for fire code reasons, we cannot have any of the exit ways impeded. For those that are in the hallway, if they plan on speaking, they could come in at that time and they could speak, but unless there's an open chair, they're going to have to go back out into the hallway. We'll start with the agenda. First things first, the regular agenda is before us. Is there any additions or deletions by fellow board members or staff at this time? With one, I would like to make one change to the agenda. I would like to move Concerns of Citizens or Public Speaks up to the beginning part of this agenda before the hearing starts. So that way, if anybody's here outside of the Cairo rezoning issue, so they're able to address the board at that time, they don't have to sit through the entire hearing and agenda to get to it. Is anybody here to speak for any other reason other than the zoning amendment that's at six fifteen? Does anybody have any concerns other than the zoning amendment? Okay, hearing that will close Concerns of Citizens and the agenda then will stand as presented. We will stop the regular agenda here in ten minutes at six fifteen for the zoning amendment five five eight. At this time, we're going to go to the Sheriff's Report. There's nothing on there, so we'll go to Detective's Report.
Thank you. For January 2015, we handled eight hundred and fifty-three calls for service, two percent decrease since from 2014, and a hundred and nine crash reports, fourteen crash with injury reports, pretty big jump in alarms with a hundred and eighty-two, as well as traffic stops, a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and twenty-seven citations issued and twenty-nine arrests. I conducted twelve follow-up investigations in five most cases.
Detective, we'll go to the...
I'll introduce the resolution, and then I'll turn discussion over to Detective Cohn. So I do have a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to approve the purchase and authorized payment to Weeds Online for the Weeds Online Power Plus Service Package in an amount not to exceed two thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars for Plain Township's half of invoice, number two three zero eight seven eight, Fund One G zero two.
I will also move on Detective Number Two. Second, any discussion? Detective Cohn?
Weeds Online is basically a database of pawn shops, secondhand stores, eBay, and scrap yards, all of the participating businesses, hazards, reporting online, for basically us to check into. We can do serial number checks, we can do a bunch of new stuff in investigation and recovery of stolen property. Something's entered into NCIC as stolen, it'll show ahead, it'll show us who the person that pawned it, give us all the information, we can then put a hold on it through the system, recover it, get it back to its rightful owner. There's also a reported function that is actually free to the citizens. They can actually log in, register all their electronic devices, make model serial number. If any of those items should unfortunately be stolen at any time, they can just access that, print it up, give it to us, so we can enter it into NCIC as stolen. We all have electronic devices, it's a nice way to keep track of everything that you have personally. Can you just log in, you print up your list, and you give it to us, so you can hopefully try to find it. There were two free trials since November of 2013 that I was able to utilize. In those two free trials, numerous items of property, we actually, we saw a couple burglaries, a couple thefts of vehicles, a couple stolen properties. We were able to utilize it in that two, three month, or that two free trials we had. In the last page of the pack that I gave you, were actually the first, second, and final proposal that I had been working with them since, like I said, it was about November of 2013. The last page is actually the proposal that we ended up with, but I think we worked out a pretty good deal with them in the price and what we're going to recover in property in the next year, having the system, is going to far exceed what it costs Columbus system. So it's a good, it's a good program.
Do other cities and townships, do you know anyone who uses this, how useful is this for them?
Columbus Division of Police uses it locally. I believe Jackson Township has it, that's the only other agency in this county that has it. Carroll County has been using it for quite a while. That's actually, we might got the information from, very successfully, a lot of good results with this, I haven't heard anything bad. Speaking with them, there's some more agencies in the Northeast Ohio area that are looking to get, to get it as well, because it's such a good product.
Okay, no further discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasus?
Yes.
Item number two, I'll turn over to Mr. Steinberg. I'm sorry, that's the end of the Detective's Report. Under New Business, item number one, I'll turn over to Mr. Steinberg.
Gentlemen, we have a resolution, I'll read it, and then I'll kind of explain what it is. Hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Secretary of Ohio to approve the purchase and authorized payment to Cutter Power Service for a Ventrac Aerobator in the form of demo in new light condition in an amount not to exceed six thousand ninety-eight dollars and seventy-six cents from Fund Zero One F Zero Five. The aerobator attaches to our Ventrac mower. What it does is allow us to till and seed and fertilize all different types of brass, turf, et cetera. We can use it all three parks. In particular, it'll help us continue to rejuvenate and build upon the turf management of both Diamond and the Dog Park, is one of the major projects we see with this. It also allows us to hit some of the back half of Schneider, so that we could till pieces of that land back there and create butterfly gardens and wildflower gardens, so that the community has something to appreciate back there in that back half before we decide on permanent development.
Let's move on to New Business Number One. Second, any discussion? Do we have, don't we have that split seeder also?
We have the split seeder that we still use, it's at Diamond, specifically for the athletic turf. This allows us to drop the seed a little deeper into the ground, so it roots a little better and kind of anchors a little better, and is a little more permanent once it germinates and sprouts.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Heading on roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Gevasus?
Yes.
And that's the end of New Business.
Just trying to make as far through this quarter as we can, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fiscal Officer Number One, the request for a resolution to pay the pending warrants of the amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand four hundred and nine dollars and two cents.
So moved. Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasus?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Two, is a request for a resolution to authorize payment of regular payroll amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I move it forward. Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasus?
Yes.
And Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Three, is a request for a resolution by the Board to authorize a payment for the following medical claims.
So moved. Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasus?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Four, is the financial report.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
And last but not least, Fiscal Officer Number Five, is the request for a new liquor permit over at Phillip Golf and Swimsuit Bar and Enterprises.
How does this play into the... It's already operating, are they open for this for portion of that real estate over there?
That I don't know. It's different owners, this is for Phillip Bar and Water. So it's a different name than the permit that's already over there.
It's for the downstairs people of the golf house.
That might be. It is a new permit, so there's certainly one there.
There's already one there, this is a different one.
And we did already speak with the Stark County Sheriff's Office, and they do not have issues.
This is just whether or not we look to have a hearing on it.
Okay, send out a request for a hearing.
Yeah, our typical procedure is that we check with the sheriff, if they've had some issues, then we would certainly look into it, but if they haven't, we typically set them on. We won't make the ultimate decision on that anyway.
And conclude the fiscal officer's report. It is six fifteen, so we're going to stop the regular part of the agenda. For zoning amendment five five eight, before we get started, we're going to lay out a little, some guidelines for tonight's hearing. First things first, the board does have a three-minute speaker rule, we want to allow all the residents that want to speak, to speak. We ask you to confine your comments to within that three-minute timeframe, but what the board is going to allow is going to be fifteen minutes for an opening statement from the petitioner that's asking for the zoning change, and we're also going to allow fifteen minutes for somebody that would like to represent the group of those that may be opposed, to give a presentation after that. And at that point on, we're going to give three minutes to those that wish to speak in favor, and we're going to give three minutes to each person that would like to speak against. The only thing that we ask that you do during the hearing is direct your comments to the board, not the individuals in the audience. We don't want to get into a situation where people are addressing people in the audience that can get kind of contentious at times. Yes. So at this time, I'm going to call the petitioner up to the public that he likes, introduce your name and address for fiscal officer, and we're going to give you fifteen minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. Township trustees. My name is Richard Bancroft, I represent Victory Gate Developers PDL-C, they're located at fifty-three seventy-six Fulton Avenue, North West Kent, Ohio, four four seven one Eighteen months ago, I was first introduced to what is more commonly known as the Cairo property. I had an opportunity to walk the site. After researching your zoning code and reading your mini comprehensive master plan in 2012, we entered into negotiations with the current owners, in an option agreement to purchase the land. I hired Mike Woland of Woland Engineering and Brian Ashman of Cooper and Associates, two engineering firms, to work with me to begin to formulate a development plan. We hired an engineering firm to do a preliminary wetland determination, and the original concept plan that we had, and we didn't feel it was an unreasonable density, you have two units to the acre, you built a plan that was not exactly what this site deserves, not exactly what we were trying to achieve here. Nonetheless, we did have a preliminary meeting with Denny Volk, we had a preliminary meeting with the area residents, we presented that concept plan, we took all of the comments, all of the input, and we began to slowly work to redesign our concept. Once the growing season started, we actually completed a full-blown wetland delineation that has been submitted to the United States Army Corps of Engineers. We went through fourteen revisions of our concept plan. Our goal at all times has been to meet the goals, recommendations, strategies, and objectives of your mini comprehensive master plan and your R six zoning, which your mini comprehensive master plan has recommended you consider for this site. We also researched copious notes, minutes of all of the previous attempts to develop this plan, rezone this site. What we have come up with is a one hundred and twenty-two acre site. It's one hundred and sixty-five homes. There's fifty-two point nine percent is open space. Nearly sixty-two acres of the one hundred and twenty-two acres are reserved for open space. Of the open space, seventeen point one one acres is wetlands. We propose to impact about a half acre or less. There's prime real estate on the east side that is ripe for development, but after looking at the infrastructure that it would take to bring additional homes to this site, we decided and determined that that did not make long-term financial sense to the township. It did not make sense for the site, and as such, this is what we are proposing. I want you to notice that, first and foremost, the R six zoning allows for multifamily. There is no multifamily proposed for this site. It is all detached, single-family homes. The surrounding land uses to the south and to the east are all detached, single-family homes. And this proposed community is at a density that is below the densities to the south and to the east. It's also below the density that would be permitted under the RR zoning. Regional planning commissions report to you indicated that up to one hundred and seventy-nine homes would be permitted under the current zoning. We have been deliberative, we have been patient, we have been introspective, and throughout, we have been engaging everyone in the area. Now, I understand, you're going to hear a lot of opposition today. You're going to hear opposition, they'd rather just not see the site developed at all, and I understand that. I get that. You're going to hear fears. Fears of flooding. That is not an issue to be addressed at zoning, but it is an issue that we know we are going to have to address. We are going to have to go through a design and engineering process. Mr. Ashman is going to have to present a stormwater pollution prevention plan, he's going to have to take the surrounding area, all of the elevations, he's going to have to look at how that stormwater is flowing onto the site and off of the site, and he's going to have to address that. Stark County Engineers, regional planning, Ohio EPA are all going to weigh in on that. And prior to us moving one shovel of dirt, they're all going to have to be satisfied that the stormwater pollution prevention plan that he has designed will work, and it will meet current regulations. You're going to hear fear of increased traffic. Whether we develop the site thirty thousand square foot lots, or whether we develop it this way, there's going to be an increase in traffic. Your comprehensive master plan has looked at your projections for population increases over the next fifteen years. You know that your population is going to increase. One of the things that you cited is that you're going to be eventually having to widen Market Avenue to four lanes. In the near term, we can adjust, if O-Dot, things necessary, adjust the white at Diamond and Market Avenue. You're going to hear loss of wildlife habitat. When there is development, wildlife habitat is disturbed. But if we clear-cut the entire site and put in thirty thousand square foot lots, we're going to do a lot more to threaten wildlife habitat than we are by leaving, better than fifty percent of the site is open space. You're going to hear that there's going to be a lot, that there's no universal access to this open space. After the Board of Zoning Commission recommended this rezoning, Denny was sitting in his office and he put a phone call in to me. He said, "What do you plan to do with the open space, and would you entertain discussions with Stark County Metro Parks?" Stark County Parks District Senator Buell came out, we met in Denny's office last week. We are looking at a minimum of adding a trail system through the open space that can connect with Diamond Estates and eventually hand over at Diamond Park. We are also in discussions with having them take ownership and control of all of the open space. What particularly interests them is the wetlands. There are opportunities there that the Metro Parks can bring to enhancing and possibly increasing those wetlands through preservation mitigation credits. We also have two wetlands on the north end here and this wetland over here. My environmental engineer has categorized all of these wetlands. Those two wetlands have some invasive species. They can be enhanced. Of the wetlands that we're going to be impacting, we have to either purchase credits in a wetland mitigation bank, or purchase a B and Lu, or we engage in some onsite enhancements. I put a call into the superintendent of the Plain Local Schools, who referred me to Chocola Whitfield, who's the principal at Glen Oaks High School. I spoke today with Chris Donahue, who's the teacher at Glen Oaks High School and handles their horticulture classes. We are in initial discussions to work with the students at Glen Oaks High School to give them a learning opportunity, as we work with the coordinating agencies, and as we develop a mediation and enhancement plan on those two wetlands. This is a community that is going to be an asset to Plain Township. It preserves open space. We have done our level best to make sure that, if you notice in this plan, every home, every home in the subdivision backs up to open space. And we have not included our stormwater management facilities in our calculation of open space. This is true legitimate open space. You're going to hear tonight that what we're proposing is unreasonable density, and that's based on the theory that if we were forced to develop this as thirty thousand square foot lots, there's no way we'd get a hundred and sixty-five homes here. Gentlemen, I submit to you, that is not the issue. The issue here is, do thirty thousand square foot lots make sense today? I Googled large lot development. One of the first links that comes up on the page is Wikipedia definition for sprawl. And that's exactly what we are trying to avoid here, is continuing sprawl. When we go in and we compact soil, and we put thirty thousand square foot lots on the ground, we create a completely different stormwater management system than if we leave forty, fifty percent of this space open and allow certain natural drainage to continue. We are not going to be proposing a stormwater pollution prevention plan that is catch and release. We are going to provide opportunities for it to evaporate and for it to percolate into the ground, for it to recharge the aquifer, for it to continue the health of that wetland. This is not an ill-conceived, ill-advised rezoning effort, and it is not an ill-conceived or ill-advised development effort. This is the way land use should be addressed. You've already, by taking the steps, you have your comprehensive master plan, by looking at R six, by looking at the recommendations and looking at the goals to be established there, by getting away from traditional suburban development. This is the best example that I can present. I have copies of the letter from the Park District if you would like. I'm happy to answer any questions. I will point out to you that when you do Google low-impact design, when you do Google compact design, you will see that there are not only government agencies that are looking at this, but there are nonprofits, the Low Impact Design Center, the National Institute for Homebuilding, the Urban Land Institute, all of these nonprofits have been created. They're all espousing, promulgating, educating, and urging that this kind of development take precedence. Gentlemen, I thank you for your time, and I ask for your recommendation for our rezoning.
All right, at this time, is there one individual for the opposing side that wishes to utilize their fifteen minutes?
My name is John Jerkison. I am here to give our brief fifteen minute presentation. Whenever you're ready. All right, U.S. Avenue twenty-six thirty-three, Diamond Street, northeast. I'll get right to it, I don't know if I have enough time to get to everything. Let me first of all address this, what I'm going to refer to is this myth of density. The plan, gentlemen, had the opportunity to see the brochure that they put out titled the reserve, and in it they mentioned this density of one point four nine houses per acre. What I've done is, I'm going to show you, Mr. Ashman, just give you a chance to look at this. Very rudimentary, using work and cutting and doing some taping, I've done my best to try to estimate how many houses that you could legitimately put on this property with thirty thousand square foot lots. Needing a little bit of room in there for roads and not impacting too much on the wetlands. Keeping in mind that Mr. Ashman mentioned last time that some of these lots can actually contain wetlands on them. What I've concluded from that, as you'll see, roughly ninety-one lots. Each one of those rectangles on there is a hundred by three hundred, the hundred-foot frontage is the minimum, thirty thousand square foot lot is the minimum in an RR, which of course is what is currently zone now, all of the areas surrounding it. What I've come to is ninety-one lots over, just under ninety-one acres, which puts the density of one lot, one home per acre. I think Mr. Ashman at the prior hearing, he estimated, when asked by Mr. Seeburger, he estimated about a hundred lots, so we're not too far apart. Point is, they're proposing one point four nine lots per acre, we're proposing, or what we're asking is to keep it the same way, and we're looking at one lot per acre. Mr. Bancroft just mentioned that, he asked whether or not thirty thousand square foot lots make sense today. I would submit to you, the question is, does thirty thousand, do thirty thousand square lots make sense here? That's the issue. This cannot be looked at in a vacuum, it cannot, you have to take into consideration all of the other adjoining neighborhoods and surroundings. This entire area is zoned RR. And what you have, basically, what I've been calling here the last few weeks, you have this donut hole, this vacant land in the middle of this RR. And what they want to do is, they want to come in, they want to stick this R six right in the middle. You have all RR around here, and you're going to put R six right in the middle. We can throw around spot zoning, or the lack of step down zoning, but traditionally, what we see in an organized development in a township or a city, is you have some sort of step down zoning, where you go from RR to R one to R two, and then maybe somewhere back in the back, you have an R six. And I'll show, I'll just remind trustees, I know you've seen this map many times, you know, the white area being R one, the green area is the RR, and that's what we're talking about here, we're actually... And I'll show, I'll just remind trustees, I know you've seen this map many times, you know, the white area being R1, the green area is the RR, and that's what we're talking about here. We're actually up here in this RR. And nowhere in here, this is probably the third, maybe fourth largest area of RR, the zone in the entire township, nowhere in any of these green spaces do you see additional colors, different colors in the middle. Nowhere else in the township have we decided to just stick a different kind of zoning right in the middle of an already RR area. Again, we go from, we go from 30,000 square foot lots that are required here and the RR all the way around. When we get to an R1, we go to 12,000. R2 is 9,000. R3 is 8,000. R6 is 7,500. And what they're looking at is somewhere between 78, 90 lots of 7,800, 65 lots of 10,000 with a change, and 10 lots of 15,000.
R1's 15,000.
Okay, R1.
R1's 15,000. R1A's 12,000.
Okay. The point being, we're going from 30,000 square lots all the way around to anywhere on an average of about 10,000 right in the middle of the water. Now, Mr. Bancroft keeps mentioning the mini-master plan, and I'll show you again some of these provisions. When we're talking about the northern boundary, all right, which is the part of the mini-master plan that he's referring to, again, we're talking about this sort of beigeish area up here. All right? So the particular provisions that Mr. Bancroft is focusing on in the mini-master plan encompass an area all the way over here, over here. All right? And he's picking and choosing certain characteristics of the mini-master plan to support the construction of the rezon here today. I would note that, and this is again coming from the mini-master plan, that the priority planning issues of the northern residential area in the township include preservation of open space and rural character as area continues to develop a residential subdivision. Well, you already have a rural area. Preserving the rural character, that comes directly from your mini-master plan. His existing soil conditions are creating problems with continued suburban residential developmental safety systems. And now we're going to further this by adding all these additional lots. And again, from your mini-master plan, you'll see the areas that are served by sewer and those that aren't. And here we are up on this red spot here that's not served by sewer. Now, the portion in which Mr. Bancroft is referring in the mini-master plan comes from the zoning recommendations in this northern residential area. And it does say that Plain Township should consider rezoning these areas to R6 planned unit development and using the development review of the authority of this district to encourage a more innovative open space subdivision development pattern. Well, that's fine if you have just a vast expanse of green space already there, just a vast expanse of RR area, and somebody wanted to come in, and they did, they wanted to plot out 30,000 square lots over the entire thing. Okay? What I would submit to you, what makes this area different than any other area in the township that we have to worry about that, is that you have the existence of these wetlands. The considerations that are already in place in the mini-master plan are taken care of because you have this sort of blotchy wetland pattern that's in this RR area. All right? So you can't come in and just take this area divided by 30,000 square feet and build 175 or however many lots are in it. And again, this is mentioned at the beginning, the Preserve, where they mentioned that, and I think Mr. Bancroft says, that, well, we could build 175, but we can't. You can't because you have the wetlands here. And so the normal considerations that would lead perhaps to a rezoning to an R6 are already in effect here because you can't build on these wetland areas. You're not going to be able to build a road through here. It's going to be too cost prohibitive. All right? And short of relocating these wetlands at an exorbitant amount of money, you're not going to be able to just divide this up into 30,000 square feet and put houses all over here. So the considerations that are in there for the mini-master plan and the R6 are already being taken care of because of the wetland space.
We have about seven minutes and 45 seconds.
Thank you. Press something. We come in, let's talk about traffic. All right. You got, first of all, you have a dedicated right turn over here on Market. Okay? Now, the vast majority of these people, if they're going to go anywhere, they're going to go south. All right? Washington Square is down here, Felton Village is down here. All right? Maybe you might go this way to get to the highway. You're going north. If anybody's ever been on Mount Pleasant though, nobody wants to go on Mount Pleasant to get to the airport or anything. You have to do this little zigzag thing all the way through there. So you're going to go south. Everybody through here is going to go south. And so they're not going to come out on the market. They're not going, they're not going this way. It's a dedicated right turn. So all of these people are going to be funneling through these two streets right here. Okay? To come this way. Now, some people may decide to go off the way or run a long way, but I would say, you're going to come this way, and they're all going to be stuck at the left. And for anybody that's ever gone down this road after one of the soccer tournaments or the cross tournaments, or after the churches let out, the traffic is backed up all the way to Beverly. And now we're talking, we're going to add 155 additional trips per peak PM hour, although if it's not the evening, it's the problem, it's the morning. They're going to have all these cars backed up here, and trying to get through that light is going to be ridiculous. Not to mention the fact that now, all of these people who once lived in a quiet neighborhood and the kids rode their bikes in the street, they're going to have to deal with 155 additional cars coming through their lot. I would point out too that, I would point out too that there are no guarantees after tonight that we're going to end up with the same plan. What the code says is that anything that finally gets submitted to the township has to be substantially the same. But that doesn't prevent them from running into a problem down the road and coming before the ECA or various. So nothing's actually stopped. I'll let other folks address the flooding and all that to the right of the front there. I will say again, look, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a scientist, but if you're going to add 165 lots in here and tell me that that's not going to have any effect on the wetlands, that just, that, that's not common sense. It doesn't pass the smartest. You can't put all these homes and all these people and all this traffic in here and not have some impact on the environment that's surrounding the area. Okay? All right. Any conclusion? This is what, third or fourth time that I, I'm told, somebody's been here trying to redevelop, and I think this particular building is the second time. And, you know, what we keep hearing is, is, well, this is going to be beneficial to the township. We're going to have lower density, we're going to have green space, we're going to have no impact on the wetlands, we're going to have less infrastructure, we're going to have more tax revenue, which is included in the Preserve. But to be honest with you, you know what's going to have no impact on the density? You know what's going to have no impact on the green space? You know what's going to have no impact on the wetlands? Is that you leave it the way it is now. Let them develop it the way they can develop it. All right? As far as the tax revenue, yeah, you're going to get some additional homes, but what about these people here that decide they don't want to live in Plain Township anymore because now in their backyards, there's a house? Or their kids can't ride their bikes in the street because of all the traffic? Or their properties flood? And they decide it's not worth it and they leave? So there has to be consideration of the net effect on the tax. The last time we were here, Mr. Bancroft made this statement, saying, "Well, if you're driving down Market, you're not even going to notice there's a community." Well, who cares about who's driving down Market? The people that are going to know that there's a development here are the people that live around here. And that's where the ultimate consideration needs to be. All right? On the one hand, we have a developer who's coming in here asking you to rezon this property. We have a developer who, if he so chose to, could make a substantial return on this property by developing it as RR. But he doesn't want to. And the reason for that is simply because of money. He can make more money by doing this. On the other hand, we have a bunch of people here behind me. We have a couple hundred people that live around here who have already built their homes, they're already raising their families, they're already living under these conditions. These are the people that are going to be adversely affected by it. All right? These are the people that are not going to feel safe in their homes anymore because of the traffic. These are the people that are going to have to deal with the flooding. These are the people that are going to have to deal with all the problems that this is going to cause. So at the end of the day, I'm asking you, we're asking you, leave it the way it is and reject the rezoning request. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, at this time, what we're going to do, we're going to open it up for individuals to speak. We're going to go in the same order. We're going to allow those in favor of the zoning request to speak first, give each individual three minutes. But I had a couple questions real quick. What are going to be the average cost of these homes that are going in and developing?
First points are going to start at around 180. And I would imagine that as we get into the later phases, particularly on the east side, we'll see homes topping 300,000.
Square footage, please, lots between 7 and 14,000?
Between 7 and 14,000, that's correct.
Any idea of how many feet of roadway is going to be at this point?
9,400. And from the standpoint of overall density per square mile, we're at a density of 1,979 people per square mile. The residents who live in Diamond Estates to the east, the density per square mile is in excess of 3,200 people per square mile. And if you look at the south, Tottaway and Tottaway Estates, the densities there also exceed that density. So the surrounding land uses are developed at a much higher density than we're proposing
Okay, at this time, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of zoning amendment 558?
My name is Brian Ashman. I'm a partner, co- and associate. My home address is 1884 Summer Chase Road, Northeast. Certainly, people are used to seeing nothing in their backyards when there's a large open traffic property that's been opened, they get used to seeing it. They get used to thinking that this is my backyard, and anything that happens to my backyard is going to be that. That's something I can't change their viewpoint on. But we must always realize that this is not their backyard. Somebody else owns this property. Somebody else has a right to develop this property. And somebody has a right to perhaps make some money in developing this property. I'm not concerned about that either. What I'm concerned about is that the property be developed in a manner that is good for the overall Plain Township character. And I believe that this particular development is very good for Plain Township development. Mr. Jergensen did state a couple things that I don't wholly agree with. We can, he showed you a plan that showed a certain number of lots that didn't indicate that there was any cross connection between the west and the east portion. That cross connection certainly feeds. A road can be put in there. We can impact some of those wetlands and build it all through there. Soils can support it. We've already checked that out. We, however, do not want to put that in in order to try to maintain this large undisturbed building space. A lot more, many more lots could go in there. I'm not going to get into that issue. The thought is, let us create a plan that leaves a lot of open space, tries to minimize the impact to the wetlands, create a scenario where we can design the storm sewer systems and the stormwater management systems so that we can actually benefit, increase the, let's say, benefit the conditions that currently are there now. We can make things better through this development. You might think that's kind of crazy. How can you put in a development and actually make stormwater problems less? We can do that. That's what the engineers are for. That's what my, that's what I'm for. That's what my company is for. We design scenarios that allow us to recharge the wetlands. We allow scenarios, allow, as Mr. Bancroft said, the infiltration into the ground and evaporation. We put in stormwater management basins that do control the release points so that people adjacent to us are not impacted or flooded out. These are all design concerns that are being addressed through this plan that is currently presented here. Yes, we will have more traffic generated by this plan than if this property stays undeveloped entirely. Absolutely. We indicate that we're going to have a, it's been discussed or stated that there's going to be a right turn only at Market Avenue. We're still negotiating with ODOT as to whether or not we can get a full access turn there. So we can't, we can't stay positive that people have a full access turn on Market Avenue. Is that three minutes?
We'll have 30 seconds before the finish.
So we are addressing the traffic concerns. We are looking at the traffic concerns. And do keep in mind that the county, Stark County, traffic engineers and subdivision engineers and ODOT are all going to have to approve the traffic characteristics that we are going to generate from this development because traffic is going to be coming out onto ODOT. Thank you.
Good question. I'm going to explain your proposal to be able to build 160...
165.
165 homes?
Yes.
And you're saying that if you develop the entire portion of property the way that Mr. Ashman just explained to us by building the roadway and building the additional houses on the east end, that you would be able to put, what was it, write down, 190?
No, we have not looked at what we would achieve if we developed this as 30,000 square foot lots. We never intended to develop this as 30,000 square foot lots. We made a decision very quickly that with the wetlands that are here, the best way to preserve and maintain those is to seek the R6 zoning. The R6 zoning allows you to get away from the traditional suburban type subdivisions that you've seen. Over 52% of your current residential land use is of use.
I think you said earlier that you could put 179 homes under the current zoning.
What I said was, 179 homes would be permitted under your current zoning. And that was from the Regional Planning Commission's recommendation.
That's from Regional Planning.
Yes. I've never made any representations as to how many homes we would get here. I'm just making representations as to what's permitted under your code as it's written.
Not taking into account any of the other wetlands and all the other things?
Very few developers would come to you and show you the wetlands. We've chosen to take in a complete delineation because we knew that once we leave here tonight, assuming we get a recommendation and we get the rezoning, this plan runs with the zoning. I didn't want to have to do a delineation and come back and say, "Oh, by the way, we're making a change in plans because..."
Absolutely.
So I wanted to give you the most accurate picture we could.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that clarification. Okay, if anybody else at this time will wish to speak in favor of zoning amendment 558? Yes, sir, please come forward. Give your name and address for the fiscal officer when he gets, can get you to know that he has it accurately for the record. Do you think he'll have some?
I'm sure he's signed in back there.
I did. Thanks. I'm Ronald Ware, 1431 Skyway Street, Northeast. Basically, what I'm going to talk about was, we're looking for, I know we're talking about here, we're talking about making money, we're talking about, you know, more taxes available, but this nice little cutoff area here from Diamond back to these, which is all woods, is going to be now, without feeding, without being feed into this area. This will be a right turn only. Talking about ODOT, yeah, maybe they might be able to get a left turn, maybe they might be able to do traffic like us. That's much may be. But for sure, we just know for fact, this is a left turn. Over here, I guess there's a problem with the grain. They can't make, you know, an exit onto Mount Pleasant, which would have to be a traffic like their regardless. So maybe something here made more sense, just basically destroying my neighborhood right here.
Let me ask, let me just stop there. Are you speaking in favor or against?
Against.
Okay. We're asking for people to speak in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear, I was on the computer.
Let the record reflect that.
Well, I'm sorry about that. It's a special, I just got a couple seconds.
No, we're not going to give you the ejector button, Clay.
Because this right here is, we're talking about feeding all this traffic through here. You know, we're going to have multiple people in and out all day long. It's going, we've got construction vehicles all over the place in and out. And if you build it, it doesn't exactly mean that they're going to come. You know, I know there's other properties up here that Brian Holmes had, like Saratoga, Bishop's, Lexington, still been going on for years, it's still out there. Very hodgepodge, you've got home here, a home there, a home here. Very hodgepodge. Got home here, home there, home here. Not the most attractive areas. Maybe 10 years ago, but over this year, like I said, 20 years. Re-possession, re-possession, re-possession. My home values went down. This one helping? I just wanted to speak my mind.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. And I'm very, very sorry. I'll let the sheriff spank me on the way.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, let's hold our applause until the end. We don't want a series of applause to average speaker. Is anybody here to speak against, I mean in favor? Now I'm confused. To speak in favor of the amendment? Okay, that will close. Those that wish to speak in favor. Now we will go to those who would like to speak against zoning amendment 558. Again, like we said at the beginning, we want to allow as many of you to speak as possible. We only ask that you keep it to three minutes and try to not repeat the same things over and over again, even though we do want you to say what's on your mind, but just try to keep it.
I should have to pick up my kids, so I'm trying to buckle in and be first to that's okay.
You're welcome.
Angela Stone Peeler, my address is 1629 Diamond Street, Northeast. One thing I wanted to mention, you discussed what's the possibility as far as if they keep the current zoning, how many houses could they fit in? And the regional plan said 179. That is taking the literal number of acreage and dividing it by the current zoning. You legitimately cannot fit 179. I think that their engineer at the last meeting estimated maybe 100 homes. That's the realistic. So I live here and they indicated on a different map, well, really they have it here, this blue area is where they're going to dump water. And they say that wetlands naturally absorb water. I can tell you, I lived there and already my yard is wet. And it's wet all spring. It's wet a good part of the summer. There's no physical blocking for that water that they're going to dump there. It's going to come into my yard. And then I'm going to even have less of the water. Now, they indicate that you shouldn't take flooding into consideration. And I'm just telling you, you are our elected officials. They want to push you off to the engineer, to the subdivision committee. We don't elect those people. Who we elect is you, and we want you to hear about what we hear about. I offered to buy part of the land that's behind my house to keep a buffer. The current owner cited me an exorbitant price on land that's unbuildable because it's wet. I believe that there are a lot of people in this room who would create their own buffer, but they wouldn't sell to us at a reasonable price. So I'm asking you to take into consideration the fact that our land is going to be impacted. There's no way that it can't be. They can't stop the water from leaking over into my house. That's it.
Thank you.
I'll take the bus.
Who would like to speak next? Yes, sir.
President, board of trustees, my name is Dr. Larry Booker with Danison Hartville. And I live at 1091 Layer Street. And it's kind of like a dog head corner room where they got Street Eight right here. Three minutes. Boy, I'm a gobbler. So I'm going to have to get down all my notes from my patients today if I was going to talk, but I probably will email them. Number one is the traffic congestion I wanted to talk about. Many times even in the morning when I come out of Lander to turn left, get on Market, get to Hartville, I have to wait and wait and wait for traffic to heading south. A lot of times I have to make a right, work around Holy Cross Church, come out to traffic light at Diamond and Market, make a left. Now I'm heading to the office. My other concern is flooding because when you go to the end of my driveway at the mailbox and you look up towards the east and you see Market, you see this land as being zoned. The elevation is way up. If we have severe rain, in last year, we have flooding all the time down there at the end of Lander. Gentlemen and ladies, when that flooding water gets within 25 feet of your home, you start having the effect like you took X-Lax. It scares, and that's what happened last year. I was ready to tell my family, let's get out of here. So I'm very concerned about flooding issues, the increase of traffic.
Do I still have a few more minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, you do, sir. Yeah, a minute, a minute and a half.
Besides that natural habitat, I love it anymore. And the other thing is, as a taxpayer myself, what burden would be additionally created to my school district and infrastructure? Can you folks guarantee that no burden on us would become reality? I feel we are all struggling since the 2008 recession. Have we had a great recovery? No. Many of us are still making it, are just making it now. So, you know, to look at levees or renewal levees coming up, you know, that's asking a lot of earth. I live in an area where it's like I'm close to town or I get to Dublin Village, get your restaurants, you know, places like that. But now you're going to put this development, and I got to wake up and look at this when I get the paper? I just, I love where I'm at, even though flooding is always a threat. But to see this happening, I hope to God that you people get a strong consideration. Think of the people who have been existing around this neighborhood. I've been here since 1985. My wife has been here since 1973. And I really hate to see anything go. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so everybody knows, the reason why we have the three-minute thing is there's 80-plus people here. And we allow everybody to speak. In fact, I understand some people are going to speak for a minute and a half. Some may speak for three. We'll give a little bit of leeway here and there. You know, to make sure that your concerns were heard. We want to try to keep it collectively on average combined for the three minutes. So we're not here at 1:00 in the morning because that's actually going to happen. Yes, ma'am? Please state your name and address for the record.
Lorraine Pauls, 1245 Echo Street, Northeast. This is another map I got off the internet before we moved. It shows how property was. It's got something to do with the Mishellon Creek. Planning, seven years ago. We moved here seven years ago from what would be deemed a quiet neighborhood by Parkway School and Alliance. While my neighbors in the back would lament, can't we set a time to mow the lawn? As soon as one mower stops, another starts. The lawn equipment didn't bother me, but the kids revving their engines on the cars and making the whole house shake did. Even my escape to the whirlpool tub that drowned out most noises doesn't mask the vibrations connected with deep sound waves. Where there are a lot of people, there is a lot of noise. And most people tune out. To anyone who doesn't know, I've had four assaults on my brain in the past 20 years. And my perceptual world is not typical, especially when it comes to my hearing. This week, I decided that if this plan is approved, I will have to abandon my house when construction starts. Upon making this announcement, no one in my family expressed any surprise. I cannot live with construction noise, the earth rumbling, or less than 14 hours sleep. The one thing I can do is garden. But my main gardens are planted along our back property line. And the PUD plan is to flood that area. Would you see this little marker here? This is where we live. And my gardens are right along here. And you will note that this is designated as one of the water retention areas. And the maps I just gave you that show my garden, there's a fence line along there. And behind that fence line, there's grass. It's not a wetland. I'm sorry. It's just not a wetland. We have had people come through and mark those wetlands, but it's not wet. It's as dry as the rest of our yard. The day we came home from our honeymoon, we have owned our own house. Now, a few of the trustees followed the lead of the Plain Township zoning board and the Stark County Regional Planning Commission and approved this, what I call the new Venice because I'm building serpent mound in the back so no water leaks under my property. Then we will have to sell our house. For the first time in our lives, we will not be able to afford another one. Thank you. At the zoning board hearing, Mr. Seberg said something to the effect that Mr. Bancroft had a right to make money here. What I heard was that Mr. Bancroft had the right to flood my property and my only hobby, and make me a prisoner inside my house, ruin the landscape while seeing a peak find more than a dozen families who wanted to live in his new Venice. Broadway Village has been treated with little or no respect. People know Pebblebrook, but they don't know what a lovely, quiet, well-groomed little allotment Toddway Village is. Three-bedroom, two-bathroom houses on large lots. If it weren't for the dogs, I'd never hear my neighbors. To the best of my knowledge, Archway Capital in Brooklyn, New York, still owns the property. Don't those of us who actually put down our money here have the right to be protected by Plain Township officials?
Okay, at this time, does anybody else wish to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Rhonda Aiello, and I live at 1564 Diamond Street. And I just want to refer back to the Plain Township mini-maps we had from 2012. I researched that, and I just want to highlight certain points of that. As the township continues to grow and transform, its distinctive identity must be maintained and enhanced wherever possible so that it does not become indistinguishable from the neighborhood or neighboring cities and townships, being Canton and North Canton. Every acre of open land does not have to be given over for development in order to accommodate increased population. Part of what can strengthen Plain Township's identity is encouraging quality development and preservation of open space. And improving existing neighborhoods, we heard about several developments that are not completely filled right now. Improving the existing neighborhoods is the more sustainable approach as these neighborhoods generally have the necessary infrastructure already in place. Then some open spaces that are extremely sensitive to development should be preserved entirely free of any construction. Wetlands and riparian areas along the Mishellon Creek are some examples of this type of resource. Other open areas are not so sensitive and could be developed as non-active township parks similar to Quail Hollow with walking trails, bike paths, open unprogrammed play areas, dog parks, or nature centers. That's one of the things that I really enjoy about Plain Township. And page 43 of your study indicates Plain Township should work on partnerships with developers for local road improvements. And a key element of this partnership would be to provide a traffic input impact study. And I understand that that is not anything that is complete or conclusive at this point. In addition to a lot of the other road studies or engineering and environmental impact studies that have been presented here, from what I heard, they're not conclusive at this point. As far as the zoning recommendations for the northern residential area that we're talking about here, one of the points there was to discourage development in areas without publics who are available. So we know that that's not already in place in this particular area. There are existing areas that are already in development. So I just want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Gordon Pauls. I live at 1245 Echo Street. I would like to talk about plans of due diligence and easily avoidable errors. It is stated in the zoning change application that public water is available near the end of Old Elm Street. How they made this assumption is unclear. A simple email to the Canton Water Engineer produced these maps of all the water lines in the area. And there is none near Old Elm. This was an easily avoidable error. Mr. Bancroft has stated that letters were sent to all adjacent homeowners regarding meetings they held about this proposal. We did not receive a letter. The map they submitted with proposal is at least seven years old. There are six houses adjacent to the property between Beverly and Dana. The map had incorrect names for three of them. This is a 50% error rate. A few minutes on the auditor's website produced the correct current owners' names. I have them on this list if you would like to see them. This is another easily avoidable error. My daughter and I pointed this out to Mr. Ashman after the hearing at the zoning board. Rather than accept responsibility for these errors, he threw his cat people under the bus. I find this troubling. This begs the question, how many more of any of these easily avoidable errors are in this proposal? In my opinion, this is more indicative of slipshod work and due diligence. I expect we are going to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Wille, I think you are next.
Okay, thank you. My name is Rob Barello. Address is 1900 Mount Pleasant Street, Northeast. I actually have two comments, but this gentleman has already brought up my last comment, so I won't repeat that. I was the person that actually brought this issue to the board the last time we had the meeting. And I want to thank you for getting those facts because I was kind of chastised that night that I was bringing up information that wasn't researched. Well, we talked to the residents. I looked over there, saw no fire hydrants. It was a pretty good indication that there wasn't any water at Elm Street. But this gentleman here has done the research, and I do appreciate that. And of course, the developers were saying, well, that's no big deal. We can just run a line across there. Who cares? We can just do that. This gentleman, again, has pointed out the point that should be taken attention on that is the fact that these developers submitted a application that really was not correct. Now, I'm sure they can correct it. I'm sure they can run water. But really, the important thing is what else, as again, as this gentleman pointed out, is not in, is correct. So that's the one thing I didn't want to talk about, but he covered it, so that's good. I think I still have time. I wanted to reference for the trustees, a national report done a few years back. The National Community in Housing Visual Preference Survey, sponsored by the National Association of Realtors, facilitated by the Nielsen Association, identified as priority policy number two. Maintain rural undeveloped lands in rural areas and preserve environmentally sensitive areas. Rural areas should remain rural and be developed only as rural using rural architecture and details. Land stewardship of large land holding must be promoted everywhere. This is important. It is our understanding that Plain Township has adopted a very similar stance on preserving this rural atmosphere. Please tell us, just how does this proposed PUD R6 zoning change, away from the current RR rural residential status, conform with this above stated goal? Specifically, how do cluster homes built on tiny lots conform with existing homes that surround this property, which includes properties well over an acre in size up to 30 acres with many at least one-half acre? Could this pro- Could this proposal even be considered spot zoning, given the vast majority of properties are deemed rural residential? Isn't the township's first responsibility to our current residents, who with lifelong investments in their properties and their happiness at stake? We ask that Plain Township trustees vote no and protect the quality of life here, the reason many of us moved to this area. Thank you.
This gentleman on the back of the picture is asking a couple of questions.
Good evening. My name is James Phillips, and I live at 1075 Mount Pleasant Street Northwest. Permission to approach you, Ben? I want to...
My partner Lori Figurale and I, to clarify, live on the northwest corner of Mount Pleasant and Market Avenue where the horse farm is. It was formerly a llama farm for many years. It's a five-acre property. And before I read my statement, I'd like to point out that the bulk of the homes on this proposal are on the west end of the property, which sits on a big hill. And our chief worry with this whole plan is the drainage. So with that, I'd like to, the photos I gave you for the rest of you guys up here are all of flooding on our property. So I'd just like to read this quick statement. Dear trustees, we are residents who will be directly impacted by your pending decision concerning the proposed plan to develop a 128-plus acre property known as the Cairo property located on Market Avenue between Diamond Street and Mount Pleasant Street. Our chief concern regarding this plan is how the storm drainage will affect our home at 1075 Mount Pleasant Street Northwest. As it stands now, over 600 feet of our frontage along Market Avenue floods severely during heavy rainfall, also approaching westward up to our horse barn, which is more than 100 feet west of Market Avenue. Please take note that we have horses residing in this building and on the property. Several years ago, Stark County Engineers replaced the twin-round culverts under Mount Pleasant Street at the intersection with the new single-box culvert. This project slightly improved the drainage dissipation following heavy rainfall, but nothing has been done to address the required maintenance to the grub ditch, which is the county ditch that runs along our property and continues south through Lander and that neighborhood, to fix the problem downstream, to fix the actual problem. We are not strangers to this subject, and over the years have been in close contact with Mr. Gary Connor, a hydraulic engineer with the Stark County Engineers. Through his office, we have been informed that there is no plan in place to address the county ditches and that there are no funds available to do so. In effect, there is no one to call or contact regarding flooding caused by a county-wide ditch system that has not been maintained for decades. We have enclosed pictures of flooding on our property with the new culvert. All those pictures were taken in June of 2014, so that's after the culvert was replaced. We are also aware of other homeowners in our neighborhood that are directly impacted by flooding due to the existing condition of the county ditch. May I have thirty more seconds, please?
That's fine, yes.
We are certain that the proposed development will only put further strain on the unmaintained ditch, leading to exacerbation of the flooding problems in the area. We also share the other citizens' concerns regarding increased traffic that will come with the approval of the plan. Our intersection is already one of the most dangerous in the county, but will come even more so if this plan moves forward. So at this time, we would like to address, oh, let's skip that part. You know a lot of us were happy with how it lasted zoning meetings, so I'll jump over that. In closing, we passionately urge you to deny this request for a zoning change on this property. In approving this request, we feel that the Plain Township Zoning Board did the equivalent of giving a failing student a passing grade in order to send the problem down the line for someone else to solve. Should you, the Plain Township trustees, approve the request, you will be sending the aforementioned problems associated herein to other authorities at the county level who readily admit to having no solutions. Please assert local control over this issue by denying this request of zoning change. You will be doing a great service by honoring the wishes of the existing residents who will be negatively affected by this proposed plan. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Not at this time. You can keep those. And I'm going to ask, if we pass down the act of this, or file, so that way your entire thing is entered into record. Yes, you can keep all those. Thank you very much.
Mr. Seabird says, Mr. Arce, have you ever been to that property to look at the flooding, just to touch on the flooding?
I am aware of flooding in the neighborhood, and I am aware of changing the culvert.
One of those photographs has the road code on it.
I've seen it. I've seen it. But we'll come back to questions for the Rosen, or then the zoning and law director, as need be at that.
Hello. My name is Rhonda Mitchell. Yeah, I live at 764 Beth Park Avenue Northeast. I have something entirely different, a different perspective to, I guess, address everyone with, including the rest of the audience. It hasn't been brought up, and I think it's rather unusual, unique, and special. I recently moved from San Diego, California, yes, Paradise, to Canton, Ohio. Wait, wait. I lived on a 1700 square foot lot on top of a mountain overlooking 360 degree view of French Valley, California, which is a suburb between LA and North County San Diego. It actually is right at Southern California 100, Tameka Valley, in case anyone has ever been there or wants to go there or is familiar with that area. It's right on the border near the hot springs, which does have actually hot water. When you turn your faucet on, cold water faucet on in the summertime, you get hot water and cold water. So it's awesome. When you go outside, you smell the waves and the smog, right? Okay, so I've been there for 25 years. I'm a native Clevelander. I'm proud of it. I finally convinced my husband to retire, and I went online, and believe it or not, and I hope I have a few more minutes. I bought the house in Canton on Beth Park online, sight unseen, after doing about two years of research. The point I want to make is that I thought it was an absolutely perfect place to live, because I'm sick and tired of tracked homes and being on top of each other and listening to Mexican music on one side, Hispanic, and having the neighbor on the other side be an illegal immigrant from somewhere, and the rest of the neighborhood had met viewers. And every other week, there was a helicopter SWAT team going around the neighborhood trying to find whoever had escaped or jailed or whatever. And it may sound all kinds of things, but that's basically what you're looking for when you have houses so close together in a neighborhood that's not policed. Are they going to have a homeowners association? Who's going to, who's going to, you know? Yeah, control. I mean, who's going to police that or control that besides the traffic, the noise, the people, the crime? You know, you're destroying the beauty of this neighborhood, of this town, which makes it so desirable, which is why we moved from one part of the country to the other to live in this peaceful, beautiful surroundings.
Emily March Strel, one of the owners of 1245 Echo Street Northeast.
Anthony DiGio. Emily March Strel?
I believe each of the trustees should have received the packet that we did for the zoning board. I'll try to get through this really quickly. Some of my main points are, I did a study of the home sales in the area, and I found that in this area, the average home sale in the last two years was 136,000. Only nine percent of them were over 175, which is the lowest price point of this development. And of those that did sell for over 175, they were all on lots larger than the non-estate lots are projected to have. Speaking of lots, well, no. Looking at lot size in general, you can just see that the average of the area around is a 25,000 square foot lot, and they're looking at putting 7,800 square foot houses in here, which is quite a contrast to the existing neighborhood. We also want to point out that when the diamond estates went in, they started out at from the 170s, and then we remember seeing signs continuously drop down to from the 110s. So we question, we just question if there really is as much of a revenue benefit as the area claiming. Additionally, 21% of the home sales in the nearby area were either foreclosures or reselling of foreclosed properties. So we're going to now add 165 more houses to, you know, it'll unbalance the laws of supply and demand. There's going to be even more supplies, there's going to be less than we in for these houses that we're putting. Our property values are already dropping because of all these foreclosures, and we worry that this could contribute to that. On the traffic, everybody's spoken to it. My only thing is to note that in the Mini-Master Plan, it does already list the width of Ivy and the lack of a turn lane at Mount Pleasant and Diamond as concerns. It says that Stark County will widen the road by the year 23rd. So until then, we've got an area that we already know is a problem. This plan would add a meager to that problem. There are a lot of things that they claim their proposal meets the Mini-Master Plan, and I do not agree with all of their claims. I have in the packets, I sent you the exact quotes of everything. I'll try to just highlight a couple of them. Also, another note, I feel that the township has responsibility to the existing property owners to encourage development that is consistent with what is shown on the Plain Township website, as that is the information that we had when we decided to purchase our property. When we moved here, and still today, the website shows the property in question as rural residential with no proposed public sewer. That configuration, according to the zoning code in Plain Township, would result in two acre lots. That is what we feel that any proposal should be measured against out of fairness to the existing residents who purchased their properties with that information. I guess I don't have time to answer my other issues, but...
I'll give you forty-five more seconds.
They claim that they're going to meet the goals of preserving the natural resources, which it may be better than the plans that we've seen in the past, but it would be even better to parcel up land and let the adjacent residents buy buffer property or to leave it undeveloped as if. That would be best way to preserve the natural resources. They claim that they're maintaining a sound revenue base through a balance of land uses, but the Mini-Master Plan specifically describes how that should be achieved, and since this is not commercial or in an area with the infrastructure, like roads, sewer, and water already in place, this goes counter to the Mini-Master Plan's definition of that. They also claim that they provide a variety of housing types, density, and values. These are all single-family homes that start at 175,000, so I don't really understand how that is a variety of housing types and values. They also claim that they're encouraging green space. And I just want to point out, the one quote from the Mini-Master Plan that I think is the most applicable, says approximately 2,400 acres of undeveloped land remain. Some of this land is actively farmed, some is vacant, and other parcels contain woods, wetlands, and other natural features. All of it is important to maintaining and enhancing the character and attractiveness of Plain Township.
I've got a question.
Okay.
In regards to the sales information that's taken into account, is that what these spreadsheets are?
Yes. There are wider seven pages of spreadsheets on the back. That is every house that was sold in the last two years from Stark County auditor website.
Within the area?
Within the area...
Township as a whole?
No, within, between Mount Pleasant, Apple Grove, Market, and Middle Branch. And actually, the housing property record cards were submitted during the zoning meeting as in a binder, if you want those.
Did they have the delineate, by chance, what was considered new versus existing construction? I'm just, in my head, I'm thinking through this, because I know...
I couldn't find any new construction.
I live in Laurel Ridge, and I know that situation, Seratoga goes and busts up against it. Actually, it started in the 160s, and it's actually increased in price for the period. So I'm just trying to create parallels as I can.
None of the properties on the area that I investigated were new construction for the last two years.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Would like to speak next.
My name is Kristin Beck. I live at 7221 Mount Pleasant Avenue, Northeast. We've lived there 25 years on 15 acres of land, which is about a mile from this property in Canton, Northeast. I'm coming with a different perspective than what's been presented so far. I am a licensed Division of Wildlife Rehabilitation, taking about 600 orphaned and injured animals a year from Plain Township. And my concern is a little different than some of these other concerns. This gentleman here has talked about the importance of preserving the wetland. And I also work at Alone University in the Natural Science Department and serve on the State Board with Division of Wildlife. So my knowledge of wetland use is a little bit more extensive than the average person. And anyone who is aware of what goes on in a wetland understands that the species who reside and occupy that space tend to, they're migratory species. They don't just stay and work and live within a parameter. This is, the division, as he has proposed, is creating problems for the animals that would occupy even so-called preserved wetland space. So you're looking at human interference and potential problems with people moving into an area that know nothing about how to coexist with wildlife and creating more problems from that perspective. The other thing about that is, if you put in soil, I'm sorry, the folks from Stark County Soil and Water Conservation will tell you that even one drop of Roundup in a wetland will kill all the amphibians in that wetland, one drop. So you can't tell me that 100 homes are not going to use Roundup to keep their weeds under control. So it's irrelevant that the area is going to be preserved. And as far as Stark Parks being involved in this property, I also worked there for nine years. I was on staff there at their wildlife facility, and they actually decimated a good portion of their wetlands to build the new Exploration Gateway Center, which they have not corrected their wetland mitigation problems. So keep that in mind.
Anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the board?
Everybody out the hallway.
Has anybody out in the hallway that wishes? If there's anybody else out in the hallway that wishes to address the board before we conclude and close comments, make sure you come forward.
My name's Fred Vetti, 2048 Mount Pleasant Street, Plain Township. I attended the zoning hearing, the same amendment, and the developer stated that he spent a couple hours with our zoning director coming up with information, which is all included in the, called the reserve. When I've read it, most of the information, it's like it does come from our own township. I mean, really? I want to understand. Since 2000, estates in here, we've had people coming to develop this property, and this is all the information we're given? Most of the questions were all thrown back to regional planning. Really? Plan unit development. It's about six years on the zoning mission with the Board of...
Zoning, zoning...
Yeah, zoning of the area. We have a lot of stuff to do with the different zonings, coming variances. You have a lot of stuff to do with the different zonings, coming variances, and all the developers come back and want things changed later, and that's what you're gonna be going through with the PUD. You guys sat out there and helped write the PUD. You put in your visions of what you wanted. Is this what you wanted? This is the PUD legislation. Is this what you envisioned as a PUD? I never envisioned it at all. It doesn't contain hardly any of it. It's just clustered only with a vision of someday becoming something. The law comes on narrow roads, no sidewalks and no light. Who wants to live in that? They come to you every day, every month, they're coming to here, they want more lighting. We gotta play pay for the lighting through our administration. We gotta have sidewalks and no light. Who wants to go on narrow roads with no sidewalk and no light? I mean, all I can say is, I'm just amazed that this even come this far. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to address the board? Anybody in the hallway wish to address the board?
Okay, Joe, you got a seat. My name's Gary Lalone.
Gary.
Lalone.
Lalone.
Fourteen-nine-six Mount Pleasant Street. Real quick, my concerns for my neighbors, I won't be impacted by the traffic as much as everybody else. If I take the hundred-and-forty-five homes in the biggest section, how many people have one car in their, in their house? Most have two or three, maybe more. It was a culture shock for me when my daughter went to college, and I was at the orientation with parents and students, and they said, "How many kids have a, how many kids have a car they're gonna bring to college?" Was the majority. I can't believe it. It's a culture shock. There's so many cars that people have these days. So, you take that, and you figure out the math, hundred-and-forty-five, at least two average, that's my feeling, going down this, those streets that are, that are gonna be accessed is, is gonna be overwhelming, and I'm concerned for my neighbors.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else wish to address the board before we close? Alex, this man up front, can you come?
I'm Paula Tomacoff.
Can you spell that?
I'm gonna probably spell that. T, this is Tom, E.M., Mary, E.L., K.O., F.F. Mary and Beth. I'm at twenty-one-seventy-four Old Down Street, in Apple Grove. A couple of thoughts I have, I've lived here for thirteen years, and the, the reworking of the schools, just the school buildings and the classrooms and so forth has been done, and how many families this will bring in, and how that's gonna affect the structure of the school, has been touched on a little bit. Right now, I have four children in youth school, so it's kind of weird for me to go to a school district, four kids, and they're all in different schools, so I'd hate to see that become, even further of a breakdown for many of my families. And I guess someone had mentioned that the price rating, one-seventy-five, I thought I heard that they went eighty to three-hundred. That's outrageous to me. If I think my home's worth a hundred-and-eighty thousand, but the one next door's gonna be three-hundred thousand, I want the one next door. I just don't understand how that's, you know, I'm not a financial expert, but, or really expert, but that just doesn't coincide with me. And so, I'm, I'm conserving my own house value. The house we bought, we hoped to turn on and sell, and now, because of the economy, even though that'll probably never happen, so we're thinking about expanding our home. Well, now, do we want to do that if this is gonna happen? How much more money are we gonna lose in our home trying to make it what we want? It is, I just don't think it's gonna help with the house values of everybody who already has invested, because they're biggest investment in our homes, and this is gonna have a, they have an impact on it. Oh, did I get that? Oh, and my daughter rang us and a letter in.
Yes.
That's my daughter.
Your daughter rang us.
She just turned fourteen, so she's thirteen.
Thank you.
I'm the old lady, I own a property at ten-forty-four Diamond Street, and it's, if you look at the two roads that are gonna access onto Diamond, I'm west of that and south, and just like was mentioned before, with the soccer games and church services, and just being kind of close to the light, it's really hard to turn left at certain times, but that's gonna make it so difficult traffic-wise to get out of the properties that are near us. Just wanted to mention that. Also, Mr. Van Cuff mentioned that when, is it Mr. Jefferson? Mentioned about properties for RR zoning, and he, he mentioned that, well, that was never their intent, they don't have a plan for that, they planned for R-six. It concerns me that someone wants to develop an area and doesn't look at the zoning that's there presently, and it seems to me that whenever we've seen issues, if I'm gonna generalize, where developments are having properties, problems, or the adjoining properties are having problems, the developers aren't the ones who stay to handle the problems, it's all the residents who live here and pay taxes. Thank you.
Alex?
I'm Bishop John Lochin, and I live at thirteen, with my mom, at thirteen-twenty-five Skyway Street, northeast, and I really did not intend to speak here at all, except to say that I wouldn't be in your shoes. Sometimes I think my job is tough, but it's, it's a tough discernment to make. I first saw Toddaway Acres back when there was still a sign, or Toddaway Village where there was a sign that said Toddaway Village. We brought my dad a pot of stuffed peppers for supper while he was building the house in nineteen-sixty. We've lived there since January nineteen-sixty-one, or the second house there, first one inside the allotment. Back in those days, my daddy used to help them. Emery Cove, it was a divided place to continue through, move along. There were cows on top of the hill, we're looking at now. Then after that, Paul River planted peach, peaches, and my brother used to work there. And that's gone. Those long gone, there's other stuff there now. I know the cows are not gonna come back, and I know the peaches are not gonna come back. There's something about Plain Township that still is home to me, has been for a lot of years. And I don't want to get my way on it, but I want what's good for everybody. The common good is what elected officials are here to serve. So, whatever your decision is, I'm not in favor of this proposal, but I know nothing about owning property, property values, flooding, traffic I know about. But other than that, my thoughts, my prayers are with you, it's gonna be a very, very good proposal, because it's, if I had the money, believe me, I would buy that hill and put a replica of Dracula's castle on it with a remote. That would probably be about the only thing that would be more or less fit. But short of that, short of that, we'll look, what we have to look to, that, you know, it won't be cows, it won't be creatures. I hope it's not traffic.
Is there anybody, is there anybody standing outside in the hallway that wishes to speak? Are there any other residents in the audience that wishes to speak that maybe you all have that? Yes, sir.
I'm Kevin Cuplinger, sixteen, Mount Pleasant Street, northeast, and I think I've talked to all of you guys about this issue at one point or another. I'm the next largest property on our out there. Basically, you're not only talking about turning this into a PUD. My property is right here, where they ran the dead end of the road into. You're gonna cause me all kind of trouble with trespassing, certified explorer, wheel or snow machine, God knows why. I'm not gonna stay here, I'm gonna be gone. I've already had a couple of good offers from the developers. You put this behind me, I'm outta here. They're gonna want a PUD. You're not only talking about a PUD on this property, you're gonna put PUD clear down to this park side of Mount Pleasant, over Diamond, this whole area with a PUD, because the developers that get these properties like mine, they're gonna say, "Well, you gave him a PUD, why not me?" So, it's just not this area, it's the whole plan. Another thing, somebody brought up about inaccuracies. Well, the last time I was a regional planner, they have soil type, was to the sand and ground. They're not only wrong, they're completely wrong. It's click, and that's the problem, it won't per, it won't leak into the underground office like Mr. Haggis suggested. That's why it's so wet, if it kind of sits in a hole, it won't leak. There's your wetland, it's just the topography of the area. So, I wouldn't believe anything Regional Planner has to say, because they're... I guess that's about it. And, oh, I will close in saying, as I did, the other three previous meetings that we had on this same subject. I've lived in this area probably longer than anybody in this room, over fifty years. It's always been rural residential. Please, just leave us that way. And as far as the area being developed goes, well, I wish it was developed under rural residential, so I wouldn't have to keep coming over here objecting to it. And it is being developed. Alaska's houses have been built in this area, have all been more expensive, larger homes on large lawns, which is what the area, you know, is, and it will continue to be developed that way, as long as you guys don't do this. This is gonna decrease property values. Nobody's gonna put a quarter to half a million dollar home by what's gonna turn into what the latest stand the age. Thanks.
Glad to hear somebody else wants to turn in. Is there somebody else who wanted to speak? Oh, dude. Everyone sure? Okay, we're going to close comments, and, um... Does the board have, we'll start with the board, if they have any questions before, um...
Your three minutes is up.
I mean, I took several notes here, and, um, so I'm gonna see if any of the board members have any questions, whether they read these over, because I'm sure I'm gonna have a few questions when we go over, like you said. As far as, I do want the record to reflect, this property isn't just rural residential, it is B-one, but I'm gonna make the comment that it's only two-point-seven acres of it that's B-one, so it is a majority rural resident, residential. One of the questions I think I've got regarding the water and so forth, and conversations not only with residents, but also within the county. How do you plan to address the flow rate of water? Because I, my understanding is with how the water flows from that property right now into some of the local channels, the volume could increase through there, but however the rate at which it goes through cannot be impacted. Can you talk, yeah, can you talk through that? For me, for the sake of engineering, I don't think any of us are gonna sit here and claim to be an engineer, but...
Subdivision regulations are established pretty much to control the rate of runoff from the development. So, for every storm event from two-year through one-hundred-year storm event, the intention of the subdivision regulations, or the requirement, I should say, of the subdivision regulations, that the discharge rate of the water coming off the site cannot exceed the rate that was discharged from that site prior to the development. That is for the two-through-one-hundred-year storms. We also have a requirement that we have for the Stark Soil and Water Conservation in Ohio, to do water quality treatment on the storm water that is collected in any one of the basins. For example, on that map that I had, I, we had put up there before, we had anticipated that there were going to be six different storm water management basins to treat and control the storm water runoff. But the water quality, what is done with that is we have to intercept the first, basically the first inch of rain that comes off of the property, hold that water for, depending upon what type the basin is, either twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours, and release it at a very slow rate, which usually involves like a two-inch orifice or something of that nature. So, we have water quality in the basin, a separate volume provided for that, which is the first initial runoff, so what we're trying to do is we pull out pollutants out of the water from the initial runoff, and then on top of the water quality, we have our storm water management calculations, which are supposed to bring the runoff rate down to the pre-run rate. So, based upon the regulations, very quick straight answer is based upon the rate of flow, how many cubic feet per second is being discharged from the, from the development. We do, under, under specific requests in certain design areas, we also try to retain water so that we have a equal or lesser volume of discharge, but that is not part of the mandate of regulations for subdivision, okay?
Thank you. Hey, Brian, I have one question. Is your, still your testimony yet? You can build the same amount of homes on this, that's currently zoned, as you could here planning on doing if the PUD was approved.
I don't think I ever had testimony happen.
Yeah, I mean, somewhere along the lines I had, somebody had said that, but would it be your professional opinion that it could be done?
There are means and methods to a lot of different things, okay? For example, the wetlands that are presented on the property, there are means and methods that we are allowed to impact wetlands or certain amounts, and we can mitigate for those wetlands and pretty much make those wetlands dis... We are also allowed to include as part of the rear lots, the wetlands, basically twenty feet to the rear of the, of the house, and it's part of the thirty-thousand square foot lot. But, no, these, these, Stark County's RPC, when they do their analysis of the, of the number of lots that can be generated by the existing zoning, and they were correct as they presented it, I don't think any, I'm not trying to disavow that fact, it's, it's based upon the acreage and based upon the area of the lot, and it does not account for the true distribution of the lots and any concerns having to do with wetlands, storm water management, and even, and even roadway now. So, Stark County indicated that there would be up to, if I get, if I remember the number right, a hundred-and-seventy-nine lots available for development.
And you're saying that's accommodating for the lot placement in the roads?
That, yes, it does not accommodate for the lots that would be lost in the roads.
So, that hundred-and-seventy-nine does not?
Does not.
Okay.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that through proper design and, and prop, well, let's say, proper geometric layout and the allowance of, we go in and impact a lot more wetlands, that we may not get somewhere in range of anywhere from a hundred-and-thirty to a hundred-and-fifty lots.
Would it be fair to say that the request for the PUD for that number of homes is to avoid the mitigation of those and those costs to those wetlands and the infrastructure that would be needed in those areas?
The, the intention of the PUD is to...
I know what the intention of PRD is, but I'm talking about the intentions of this plan, is it to...
The intentions of the PUD on this plan is to create a, what we felt was a reasonable number, lower than the projected based upon this RPC calculations. But it's also created in a manner that we try to decrease the amount of infrastructure that will be required and put into the development, and that reduces the development cost also. But it also reduces the township's maintenance cost over a longer period of time. If we have lesser roadways than our, our development has, there's lesser expense to the township in the long run. So, that's, it's a combination of things. The hundred-and-sixty-five lots... The 165 lots, that wasn't necessarily just said, "This is based upon, you know, we're going to create this development with 165 lots." What we did is we looked at how the development would lay out this salvage and save the open space in the wetlands, and then we created our lots of course.
My development cost would be lower building the same number of houses through the PUD because of reduced infrastructure needs?
That is correct, absolutely.
That's one question I can answer. Can I sit back down?
Yes.
As far as for the calculation, if I may, this goes back to you or Mr. Bancroft. As far as for figuring the wet, the wetlands and their so forth, is there... How's, how's that typically, is it strictly from a visual, topography? Is there any type of scientific testing or anything?
An environmental engineer goes out and walks the site. And they have to identify the three specific characteristics to determine if a site is a wetland. You have to have hydrology, you have to have an area that demonstrates seasonal saturation during your wet seasons. What happens over time is that the underlying soils in the depth of around 12 to 18 inches begin to oxidize. Clay starts to get a rust color to it. The soils are poorly drained below that, the water is held there. And what happens then is the plant characteristics start to change. And low-oxygen plants, to give you the most technical definition I can, begin to take over. If you have all three, if you have the hydrology, if you have the soil conditions, and you have the plant life, you have a wetland. Our environmental engineer, when he was on that site, he spent days, weeks going over every inch of the site, taking soil samples, looking at the plant life, and they had to do this during the growing season. So once we get into November, up until about April or May, you really can't do a proper delineation. And then that is sent into the United States Army Corps of Engineers. The Army Corps of Engineers may decide to come out and verify the delineation, or they may just simply say, "Based on what we know of the area, we are going to accept your delineation." And that's how we determine that. Once we knew where the wetlands were, and they were dramatically larger than what we had seen on the existing conditions map from 2005. And once we saw that, and we saw the existence of wetlands, a lot of the street, a lot of the homes we were gonna put on the east side, trying to cross through here to develop into here. And the amount of, and the amount of street that we would have had to put in for the number of homes we've got there made absolutely no sense. Could we have filled that wetland? Absolutely, very easily. We tried to minimize and avoid whenever possible and wherever possible. When you look at the amount of wetlands that we're ultimately going to impact, it's about 3%. And when you look at the area of the existing wetlands, and the way in which they may be able to expand and continue to expand over time through establishment of a preservation bank, mitigation bank, do some wetland enhancements, there are, there's some interest and possibilities there. What drove the plan again? And if you look at... This is, this is from your master plan. This is census data. This shows the density per square mile of the surrounding area. The density that we're proposing here is right around 1,980 people per square mile, assuming that we have an average household size of 2.29 units. Potaway to the south, Diamond Estates to the east is at a higher density per square mile than this site.
Hey guys, please be quiet while Mr. Bancroft is up speaking.
So again, what we're doing is we are reducing the amount of infrastructure. We are reducing the service to the open space. We're doing our best to preserve natural drainage areas. We're doing our best to preserve as many wetlands as we possibly can and not introduce a community that is a density that is significantly higher, effectively significantly lower than the surrounding land uses. It's harmonious.
I guess I might talk. I don't have any questions. But I could sit here, I look out, man steward, grown, is right, as a trustee, which should be good landlord steward. Tying up what your community needs, do they need larger houses? Do they need, as a senior citizen, the smaller lots? I consider talking about traffic concern, or down. I look at Mr. Bear back there, and I remember, Mr. Bear and I have in our talks years ago, kind of rough in this area, of how beautiful he loved, I used to watch his cows walk through the streets, I mean, through the backyard. Now, you tried so hard to keep that look, and made those into five and 10 acres. And I watched you sell those lots so quickly. I go down to State Street now, and I see these big homes being erected. I look at the homes just east of Water Church, and see all these big houses being built. I sold my dream house in three days, it was 8,000 square feet with close to two acres. It was gone that quick. Somebody wanted that size of home, somebody wanted that lot size. I can tell you all about that. But also, glad Bishop's here, speaks to my heart. So usually my crew knows that I speak from my heart. And they know that my word is always good, and I try my hardest. I'm not perfect, we all make mistakes, and I know daily I do. But I've always tried my hardest to serve my residents. And I don't like to show disrespect, so I don't wanna show any disrespect for you both of you, because you've worked very hard on this. But my disrespect would be to this group, who I already voted twice on. They asked for it to stay RR. And I agreed, and I voted RR. For me now to turn my back on a group of residents, to show them disrespect, to me would be disrespect. I voted. I would be now a person not in my word. And I teach my son, part of one of the hugest characters that me can be as a person is to hold your word and your word be true. And that's what I try. They know, Joe knows when I'm working with residents with water problems, do I not try? Try hard. And again, it's so hard to plead residence, it's not an easy job, but I try. So I'm just here to tell you that, this has been in front of me, this is my third time. I don't need to show any of you two disrespect, it's not my character. You worked hard on this. But I think my disrespect would be to this group, who's already been in front of me twice, and this is now the third time. And I'm not here now as a person to show any disrespect or not be a person in my word. I'm ahead of that.
Scott, you wanna go first, next to? Unfortunately...
There are, there are a lot of issues here tonight. And I would like to at this time request that you table this for one month.
No way!
On March 10th.
No.
To give us time, to give us time to, to give us time to, to look at the, the concerns and the issues here.
No.
Thirty days, I mean, I've been at this 18 months, I have no problem waiting for...
We've been at it 30 years.
Everybody, please, hold on. Mr. Jurgensen, you'll get, you'll get a minute. Let Mr. Geovasis finish his comments and then leave.
Let me speak, please. Everyone, this is a very emotional issue for everyone. It's a very emotional issue for the development. Emotions are running high. Along the lines of what Mr. Leo just said, this is not the first time this piece of property's been before us. And I've been doing this for 22 years. And I could tell you that every boarder that I've sat on takes these issues very seriously, and we listen to the people. Cause ultimately, when we make a change to change the use of a piece of property, it does have a ripple effect in one way or the other. I've never had a developer telling me that it's not going to cause an impact. I've never had Regional Planning tell me that, not, never tell me that it wasn't going to cause a great impact either. But I also could sit here with my road superintendent and tell you, over the last 20 year-plus years, how many of these developments that went in, after we've taken over the developments and the infrastructure, at the taxpayers' expense, that we went back and corrected some of these issues because they weren't addressed while they were being planned. I do take traffic and drainage into consideration. I look at Stark County Regional Planning, I look at subdivision as a recommendation, not as gospel, okay? Because I've seen the results of some of the recommendations, and it hasn't always been to the behest of the taxpayer. I think there are some unanswered questions in regards to this development. I'm gonna outline a couple in which are my own personal feelings. Anytime that I've looked at a zoning request, I've looked at it from a conception of a proper step-down. I look at the proposed development as in conjunction with the existing use of the properties around it. In my personal opinion, the proper step-down would be, as was mentioned once before, and that's what I've always used as my guiding light, is that you go from R1 to R2 to R3 to R4. You could skip over an R2, R3, multi-family, R2 a little bit higher density, single-family development. But it all depends on the circumstances in the area where this is being proposed. You know, number two, like Al said, we're public servants. We're here to represent you folks. Even though I may or may not personally agree with this development or plan, we're ultimately here to represent the people. Okay, we're also here to do what's in the best interest of the township. And I think Joe, at the cost of what these houses were seeing at 180 to 130, to 300. On that type of lot size, I don't know if that's quite possible or not, but I mean, anything is possible. I think, Joe, I did a study about 10 years ago. And I think it takes a taxable value of $229,000, I think it was at the time, to break even on the services that were going to be extended to an area as far as once we take over the road and the infrastructure and the maintenance of those neighborhoods.
I, I do believe that's true. Sorry, I do believe that number would probably be higher.
Be higher today. So back then, 10 years ago, for the township to break even, the township does not make money off of these developments. The additional tax revenue, we would hopefully be tax neutral, meaning we would break even. But it would actually take an average back then, 10 years ago, of a $229,000 appraised home for the township to break even on the amount of taxes that we collect to take over the infrastructure and maintain it going forward. $130,000 to $300,000, I don't know what that average is, I don't have a, what, 180 to 300. I don't have a calculator here in front of me. But it's gonna be close to cost neutral, maybe a little bit less. So from a tax standpoint to the, to the community, it's not going to be, it's not gonna bring additional taxes into the township. When you look at the properties that's currently existing in zoning, with the larger lots around it, it would be one thing if this property was zoned, single-family residential with 15,000 square foot lots. And we're stepping down to an R6 in my opinion. Because that would be more of a compatible use in lot sizes than the existing properties that are around it. I'm not against the PUD, I helped write that, part of the statute. The question whether a PUD is proper is where the PUD is going to be located. And in, in my personal opinion, I'm not really quite sure that a PUD is appropriate for this piece of property. And I also feel that if we can get 165,000, for 165 homes at 30,000 square foot lots, we wouldn't be sitting here today asking for a PUD for 165 homes. It would be being developed on the 30,000 square foot lots. There's a reason why we're asking for this PUD. And I'm not quite sure, you know, of the reason why. If it could be done the other way, still put the same amount of properties on the same piece, you know, 122 acres. With that said, I'll leave it to Scott for his further comments, and I'm gonna go through the rest of my notes. But, you know, looking at the layout of the plan, and I don't mean disrespect to anybody in this room or to the developers, because I know the developers, you put a lot of time, like you said, 18 months into this, and this is not something that I would make a decision on lightly either way. But according to the testimony that I've heard tonight, I think I'm pretty prepared to make a comment.
So just in closing, my closing, my closing comments. I know it's probably been a little over a week ago. Until a little over a week ago, I didn't hear a single, I didn't hear a single call about this. After having a conversation with a couple folks, let's just say, phone and email communications increased sporadically regarding this, I do weigh heavily the thoughts and the concerns of the constituents of the township, regardless of what the matter is, whether it's zoning, it's our safety service, it's our roads, it's our parks. That's what we have statutory control over. I've actually walked the property in the, in the past, so I'm, so I'm familiar with how, how, how it looks and how it lays. When, when it comes to our master plan, because I know both sides, for and against it, really, really referenced different facets of it, you know, in order to support your, your side of the argument. Factors that I looked at, that master plan also said, previously said, the ideal split for a plain township on a residential-commercial basis is 70/30. The reason being in order for a tax base to support the entire community as a, as a whole. When I became trustee a little over six years ago, I ran on the fact of updating this mini-master plan because it's the vision, it's the outlook for this community moving forward. It's what you use as a tool to hold your elected officials responsible for. Are they accomplishing the things we've set out to achieve? Or are we just riding the status quo? The master plan is something that wasn't created in a vacuum by this board with Regional Planning. This was something that was created with public, public input through a number of work sessions and so forth. So there's a lot of critical thinking by the public, by the board, by outside entities to pull all of this together. Knowing, knowing that, taking a look at that 70/30 ideal split, my concerns are this. When, when our master plan was published at that time, we were already pushing a 78 to 22% split. 78% residential, 22% commercial. It can't be undone. The reality is, of the 2,400 some-plus acres that were, that remained, there's a lot of it that's really not even developable because it's within flood, it's within flood plains and so forth. So it's never gonna be commercial, it's not gonna, most of it's not gonna be industrial. Residential is the, you know, like, piece that's left here to use. Looking, looking at that, taking into account also the inventory, or the potential inventory capacity that the township already has previously approved. When I say inventory capacity, I'm talking about existing developments or ones that have been previously approved within this last year. Take a look at Wicker Creek, there's additional capacity. Saratoga Hills, additional capacity. Edgewood is all R1. Who knows what that plan's gonna hold, when, when it, when it will be developed or if it won't be developed for some period, some period of time. It's not for me to speculate, I'm dealing with what, what I know here. Mount Pleasant, there's additional property on the northwest portion of Mount Pleasant, just before the S-curves. And then Lexington Farms. I take a look at that, there's significant capacity to fill residents, residents, residents' needs. However, I do wanna note, when you talk about foreclosures and stuff like that, there's really not a whole huge glut of real estate here. I've talked with the Stark County Realtors Association, I, I've talked, actually, one of, one of my running partners is one of the top real estate reps in the state of Ohio, the top...
in the state of Ohio, the top 1/2, 1%, very, very familiar with the market. There's not a lot of excess capacity in, you know, what's existing built. But there is a ton of capacity from the aspect of land that's plotted and can't, and can't be developed. So, capacity is one of my concern, concerns here for the overall sake of the township. The residential, the commercial mix, 70/30, we're already at 78, 22. Roadways, listen, everybody's property's been somebody else's view at one, one point in time. So, there's a right to have it developed, you know. They're not, they're, these roads are all 43,000 residents of plain townships roads. So, even if I'm over a moral reason, I don't wanna cut over, cut over through somebody else's allotment for whatever it is I'm doing. We've all got that, we've all got that right. So, as long as that's understood. I'll close on this. My biggest concern here, having walked it, looking at the topography, even with what is being discussed here with the hydraulics, taking into account the flooding that occurred last year to where all three of us were walking streets that went through regional planning, the whole nine yards, additional runoff's still a concern to me. So, I mean, with that, with that being said, I appreciate everybody's feedback and put during this process, the developers, the residents and so forth. But on the other side of that, I'd have to go for the comment for the record. And just one more thing for the record. The one thing the mini-master plan did say, and it said it in the first one that we passed back in the 90s and it said it, uh, or the late 90s, and it said in the revised one that we just passed a couple of years ago, is that we need to be good stewards of the remaining open land that we have left to make sure that it's developed appropriately. Because if you look at the zoning map against the world at that, we don't have a lot of large tracts of that green that you see left. And like Scott said, a majority of that property's undevelopable because of wetlands and some other issues and contingencies that are involved. It can or cannot be controlled. And, you know, we need to make sure, first of all, the remaining land that we have with the capacity that we have at land hand already planned. When those areas are developed, they're developing a manner that it's going to be similar to what exists and it's not gonna be, uh, it's not going to tee on existing properties. And I agree with what Scott said 100%. This, you know, the drainage of that property, regardless of drainage plans and everything else that subdivision regulation says, I've seen it all too often firsthand. And Scott, Al, and myself walk in the water every summer under our waste neighborhoods and people's homes. That subdivision regulation said that storm storms were adequate in people's homes. In good conscience, I could not increase what's, you know, being proposed over here versus what's already happening. From my part, and that's all I'm gonna say for the record. I'll make the following motion. Whereas a public hearing was held on February 10, 2015, by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to consider Amendment 558 to the Plain Township Zoning Resolution. And whereas such hearing was properly and timely held pursuant to the Ohio Advice Code 51912, whereas the Plain Township Board of Trustees was patently considered the nature of the amendment and the reasons therefore, the recommendation of the Plain Township Zoning Commission, the Stark County Regional Planning Commission, and all information provided by all other interested persons. Now therefore being hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to deny the recommendation of the Plain Township Zoning Commission. Any further discussion? Once again, I thank everybody for their time and their patience and... Call for roll call, please. Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes. We're gonna take a, uh, five-minute recess before we go back to our regular course of the meeting. We have everybody at hand.
It is now, uh, 8:36 PM. We were at on the agenda, we were going to the administrator's report, so I'll return that with Mrs. Kim.
Thank you.
Make this the rocket docket for the rest of it.
All right. I'm gonna look quick.
I'll second that.
Number one is the Stark County Health Department District Advisory Council meeting on Thursday, March 5. This is their annual meeting at 7:00 PM at the Stark County Health Department Third Floor Conference Room at 3951 Convenience Circle. The meeting's required by law and we do need a representative, um, from the Board of Trustees to attend.
What is this? I can tell you, I'm, I'll be traveling back from New Orleans and they have up the first through the fifth. So, unfortunately. Lisa, this is, um...
Thursday, March 5 at 7:00 PM.
I will go to it, um, but Lisa, please, uh...
I will email you and call you and text you and pick you up. Yes, very good. Item number two is a resolution. We're slap happy. He has nothing to do with that Health Advisory Commission. If you can't go, Mr. Flex should go. It has nothing to do with drainage.
Sure, you're reaching.
Yeah, that is a reach. Number two is a resolution to pay the 2015 Stark County Regional Planning Commission dues.
So moved. Second. Discussion, roll call, please. Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution to pay penical press for the printing of the 2015 spring newsletter.
So moved. Second discussion, please, Al. Al, this pen will also need to look at the postage.
No, we do the postage separately through the post office.
Can we have a check with letter shop? Because they can do both.
I will do that tomorrow.
Yeah, but then we can do the postage to the shop. Do the printing, printing, printing mail-in postage.
I will check that.
And, you know, there are, there are towns with residents and they get called and asked, will they get quoted?
I'll get that quoted and if I get better prices, then we will, um, do new resolutions if Mount Pleasant stands.
All right.
Did you vote?
Okay. Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item four is to, a resolution to pay the United States Postal Service for the postage for the spring newsletter.
So moved. Roll call. Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number five is a resolution to enter into our agreement with OSA Technology Solutions for our annual technical support contract.
So moved. Second. Roll call. Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number six is to authorize payment to Stark County Soiled Water District for our 2015 annual fees.
So moved. Second. Mr. Leo? Mr. Leo, roll call. Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
That's the end of the administrator report.
Chief, better?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number one is the monthly report.
Chief, did you have a chance, because I know a couple meetings ago you said you were gonna meet with Chief Jackson.
Yeah, I have with him, uh, at the end of January and, uh, you're at Institute, get that Institute somewhere around the first of February. I know we have responded there, looked at twice this month to the regency, uh, but, uh...
How's that compare to?
Um, you know, we're doing 25 calls, probably 15 or 20 of those calls a month are at the regency. So, when they're not available and they're coming from their central station, we're gonna respond, we're gonna medical response.
Absolutely.
You know, but, uh, if their station 4 or 5 isn't, orders are in that area and they're not gonna respond. So, we did meet, he's gonna get back with the rate center to discuss, make sure that they're, they're gonna prepare the policy for them personally. Well, not to send us.
Well, the way that that, um, agreement is written, that we're both toned at the same time, that, well, that's gonna continue, right?
Um, not, not at, not at that particular location.
Just for the residency?
Just for the regency itself.
Regency, right.
They're in Long Wick Avenue, yeah, we're still responding. Fire responses, uh, at the regency, we're still gonna...
That's not gonna change it?
Just medical response. Item number two is to authorize attendance to the Fire Strikers Conference in Indianapolis, uh, April 21st and 25th.
Also moved. Second. Roll call. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Item number three is to authorize attendance, payment of 9 people to our fire officer, fire officer 1 and fire officer 2 classes that we're gonna be hosting. That's up around by the state, um, in, uh, February to March.
And those are gonna be hosted at?
Substitution, yes. Seven of them, fire of 3.
Second. Roll call, please. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Leo?
Yes.
And just to let the board know that, obviously, as part of that professional development we talked about, spoke of years ago, uh, I mean, to achieve to, to get our line officers up to speed as far as their, you know, skills, abilities, knowledge, management of personnel, and these courses include many of those facets. Fire Department number four is to talk to advise on job descriptions that you have attached. And as far as, you know, ship commanders and captains and the tenants to the job descriptions were updated to reflect certification of that fire officer 1 and fire officer 2 classes. So, anybody will be promoted, any of those ranks will be required to have those classes. So, I'm giving the firefighters that currently hold those positions to get that education and training. And anybody that's below those ranks, obviously, that wanna move up to those ranks are gonna be required to have that.
Does that change then, that they're required, is that what that changes in here?
Yes. And then also the last change, that's for those, uh, those groups. And then also, the last change was with the, uh, fire prevention. And that was updated, it's been probably 20 years since that job description was updated. So, I have updated that to reflect on today's standards and technology that.
Any motion? So moved.
I'll second.
We got a meeting paralysis, sorry. I don't know, couldn't call it paralysis, I would call it, uh, comatose. Now we need a vote. Thanks for, thanks for coaching us through this thing. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Item number five is to authorize and transfer of, uh, funds into a capital account, going towards our training building, rebuilding, obviously, we're aware of the condition we're training building and, uh, I'm trying to build, do some casual cuts.
He's kidding. Get the answer.
Well, it's the flowers that are growing, the shrubs that grow outside of it, so...
It's, it's the shrubs that are growing out of the money mason.
Yeah, a little, so... Yeah, I have a little fire department fire.
So moved. Any further discussion? Roll call. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Item number six is another resolution for capital, well, capital accounts. And this is gonna be putting money towards a new pumper. It's gonna be replacing the 1989 pumper that we currently have in use. Uh, so I'm starting to build the funds up for the next couple of years, so I'm gonna purchase that.
Also moved on fire number six. So moved. Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Thank you, chief. And we'll go now to the Honorable Board Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, item number one is the monthly report for January and I can just give you a brief thing. It snowed a lot, so we cast a lot of snow after the snow. You have any questions on that?
Nice job on the 36 hours straight.
Yeah, a little for that.
Time did you wake up the next day after that one?
I, I was in bed for 12 hours.
Nice job calling, guys, nice job, too.
Item number two is a resolution to authorize a purchase of a new color copier. And I left it blank for the board to look at quotes. I did go over all these quotes with our road secretary and our IT guy, Rob Skolich. And we matched and we do have a recommendation, not just primary because of price, but because of what they're offering, so...
I'll move that the board authorizes the purchase of a brand-new color copier from ComDoc not to exceed the amount of $6,000, $6,680. I'll second it.
This one, everybody agreed was the best one. But that best resolution, best maintenance agreement cost in the long run.
Are we purchasing it or leasing it?
We're purchasing it. This is the first copier, the new copier, Red Department's had in over 23 years. We haven't handed down since. I'm gonna hand it down, Rob.
You have a motion, second? I'm gonna wait for the exception. Do you have the evidence? We just need a roll call. You have a motion, second? Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution to authorize the purchase of gasoline oil and diesel now to exceed $20,000.
So moved. Second. Roll call. Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And item number four is just something that I wanna thank Lieutenant Springer and his staff and the dispatch office for the great job they did this past week. I called them so many times, I'm sure they got tired of hearing my voice. They actually knew it was me before I even said who it was. And I watched them in action moving cars from streets at 2:00 in the morning, waking people up and knocking on doors. And they answered every caller, call that my drivers called me about. I know we missed a few, Mr. Flex has one he's gonna call us with next week. But I couldn't have been happier with the response that we got. I know those guys are busy doing other things, but they did get a lot of cars in the building. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
My drivers do too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so.
Thank you. Now go to the zoning department, Mr. Falk.
Item number one, gentlemen, is the monthly report for January of 2015. Obviously, our biggest thing going on in January is the renewal of our school games. At this point in time, we are at 14 with approximately $130,000. And I just learned today that one other will be opening up, so we'll be somewhere at 135, 135, 130, somewhere. Anybody want to have machines?
Any questions on our report? Let's go to number two.
Item number two is a resolution, uh, it's a yearly resolution approving the attendance and payment for individuals from, um, our staff, zoning staff, administrator, fiscal officer, law director, trustees, members of both, uh, country zoning commissions, zoning boards of appeals, to attend the Stark County Regional Planning Commission Annual Dinner.
Also moved, item number two. A second discussion. Roll call. Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Thank you. And item number three, we have a side lot application. Uh, this is for a vacant lot on 34th Street Northeast and this was one of the parcels that was involved with the High Forward Program.
Also moved, item number three. A second discussion. Roll call, please. Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
That concludes on, thank you, gentlemen.
What is that regional plan dinner, you know?
Skyline.
Skyline. Ever chicken dinner?
Oh, let's see, the, uh, the...
What's that?
The Don't Talk Billings.
It's good food, but every event's now there and it's like...
If I may, just, just...
What time is it?
The dinner is at, their cocktail's at 6:00, dinner's at 7:00, and just so you're aware, excuse me, we must have your reservations in by March 11th. That's one week prior. Actually, we need them in a couple of days before that, so we can get everything associated with that and to the...
Have March 11th.
If you could get them, well, if we could get them like Monday, the 9th, because we have to get our reservations into RPC by the 11th, so if you could get your reservations, look, check the calendar, let us know by March 9th, please. Thank you.
Second, do you have a side lot?
Yeah.
Let's go to the parks. And you just have time, I'll keep it to one agenda item, and it's my monthly report , gentlemen. We are tracking down the information as we speak. I put a couple of calls in, and made a couple of stops, sitting for some quotes, and I'd like to have off the ground in the next 60 days. And the netting I'm meeting with on Thursday morning at 9:00 AM for the final look. Thank you, Rob.
Glad to be here.
Thank you.
As usual, nice job. Let's go to the law director, and he does not want to stay silent tonight.
I want to. Just one item, the Lesch Everett Anexation Area, it's an expedited type 2 annexation filed by the city of Canton. It is a one-owner annexation. It is actually a parcel property. We've had some difficulty with zoning, so we can certainly oppose it if you like and file our objection in its usual manner, or we can simply not object.
Is this part of the meeting agreement?
This one is... Basically, what it is, is the individual wanted to place a manufactured home on the site in order to get city water.
Well, we have a meeting agreement in place that covers that part of the township.
Does it cover that part of the...
Yes, it covers an entire area.
Mr. Slime and that?
They cannot find an annexation, let me bring it over there.
Man, did they say sign an annexation agreement?
I would call Sam Slime, I would...
Look, I can call him tomorrow if you like. I thought it was outside of the meeting.
Yes, this is a, this is a, yeah, this is a far, this is a far...
The only part of the township we left out of that agreement was going to be to the The only part that was left out of that meeting agreement is the avenue around the hall of fame. Originated that, tried to do the three-way and ended up down the two. I mean, if they want to start annexing Lesch Avenue, it's up to them, but they should approach us first under the meeting.
Right.
I'll take a look at the meeting, too, and see what it says about the area.
So do we contest it for right now, or what?
Let me look at the date when it was filed.
27th of June.
We won't meet again till when?
We'll meet before February 4th.
We have 20 days.
Yeah, we'll meet again in...
No, we won't. Here's what we ought to do, let's, I'd like to bring a motion to the table that is to object to this expedited type 2 annexation filed by the city of Canton under all allowable areas under the Ohio Revised Code.
Okay.
Okay, so that's on the table for you.
Then call Sam.
Right.
Also move on that.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Thank you, I'll follow up on that tomorrow.
Yeah, if they want to annex, then they have their property taxes on receipt, and that's up to them.
Right.
Okay, thank you to the fire department, Lisa.
Yes. Hello, Chief Snyder, I would like to commend Plain Township Medic number four for a truly great day Friday, June 30th. They responded to a cardiac arrest victim who received no bystander CPR. They resuscitated him and identified inferior STEMI on ECG. Upon arrival at Altman, his ST elevation had resolved, so he was admitted and treated medically. He had no further evidence of MI, myocardial... Yes, his heart muscle function and mental status are normal, and he and his family are very grateful for his care. It is remarkable that he survived this event so well, it would not have been possible without the rapid response of the Plain Township paramedics. Thank you for your dedication to quality cardiac care, for making a significant difference in your community. Sincerely, Ronald Mainz. And he's the acute MI coordinator at Altman Hospital. Chief, who was on at that time?
Lieutenant Peter Pond. Actually, I got the Lucas machine on it when he came around, and so maybe he didn't want it, I guess, you know, but no, it did, these guys were, you know, the nice job these guys did. Actually, a few days after this, we had another one, we had an accident over on Fulton Road in Lakeside, I believe it was, and they had just cleared that accident, so we're heading back to quarters, they got a report of a man down, Fulton Blake, and he was in cardiac arrest, and so obviously, we were a minute, two minutes away from him when we got the call, and he was unresponsive, literally, they put the Lucas machine on him, and actually, we got to the hospital, we got a pulse, and, you know, he's in, I'm sure he's still in corner of the car, but it's remarkable, so. I think the guys were with him that day because everything just fell in place as far as being so close on the CPR and the time of that, so I know the family, that, one of our guys, that knows the families, gentlemen, so they were very happy, very well at it.
Yeah, fantastic. Item number two is from Lois Pickett from a community Christmas, and she is thanking the board for taking, allowing us to have the Giving Tree here, and also, we did the code drive. In total, they were able to help 2,300 recipients and collect over 3,500 codes, so thanking the board in our community for allowing us to be one of those host sites. And that's the end of communications.
Thank you, Lisa. Is anybody in the audience want to address the board, did they get a chance before? We have a newcomer.
You just forward, you die.
And that's on record. Trustees, have anything, fiscal officer? Okay, we'll go to the approval in minutes. Also moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hawes? Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes. The hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, during executive session at 9:00 PM from this regular meeting of February 10th, 2015, has authorized under Ohio Revised Code 121222G for the purpose in consideration of 1A, 1B, 1C, and 1D, and 3.
Second. Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?